No.
Actually, I was in there having a good conversation with Nick.
Okay, welcome everyone. Is everyone signed in? If so, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
You give the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing for the Lord's Prayer, please. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, roll, please.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Prior to announcing our next meetings, I would like all our departments to know that the deadline for submitting agenda items with our clerk is today, by four thirty PM. This is due to the holidays. We would request that anybody wanting to get on the agenda to do that today. Our next public workshop will be held on Monday, November twenty-fourth, here at ten thirty AM. And our next regular meeting will be held here on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, at ten thirty AM. It's due to the holidays. Madam Clerk?
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, and the regular meeting dated November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number three is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number five is to adopt temporary appropriations to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of Trumbull County for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-six, through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Temporary appropriations are twenty-five percent of the prior year budget for all funds and are hereby set aside and appropriated for the purposes for which expenditures are to be made.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number six is to adopt a resolution approving the submitted list labeled as O R C five seven zero five point four one D, October, two thousand twenty-five, of purchase orders to the various vendors as then and now purchase orders in accordance with O R C.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number seven is to approve the transfer of the two thousand twelve Chevrolet Malibu. VIN number is listed from the Trumbull County Auditor's Office to the Trumbull County Maintenance Department for three thousand five hundred dollars. This transaction is in accordance with O R C three zero seven point one two D.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number eight is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of November as National Adoption Month and November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five is Adoption Day in Trumbull County, Ohio. The theme for this year's National Adoption Month is Some People Are Worth Melting For. The Board of Trumbull County Commissioners recognizes the extensive efforts of Probate Court Judge James Frederica and the Trumbull County Children's Services to find loving, permanent families for all children. In two thousand twenty-five, in Trumbull County, fourteen foster children had adoptions finalized. Eleven children are awaiting finalization through the court, and fourteen children are waiting for loving, permanent families.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, and with discussion, I'd just like to thank the judge, Judge Frederica, and also the Trumbull County Children's Services for all their efforts in the adoption. And Commissioners, I will attend that to read that proclamation, just to let you know.
Fantastic.
Item number nine is to approve an enterprise zone agreement with Kimberly-Clark Corporation. The company is requesting tax incentives of sixty percent for ten years for constructing a state-of-the-art distribution center of approximately five hundred ninety-one thousand six hundred sixty-one square feet to house warehouse and office space supporting distribution of various types of consumer-absorbent hygiene products and other consumer products from other locations at parcel number two eight dash nine zero three seven three eight, located on Pine Avenue in Howland Township.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, and again, with discussion, first, I'd like to welcome Branch Sekul here. Branch, if you could give us a few words, we appreciate you stopping today, and we appreciate Kimberly-Clark in our county.
Absolutely. Commissioners and staff, thank you for the opportunity this morning. I'm Branch Sekul. I'm Kimberly-Clark's Government Relations Director. And we're before you today to request the property tax abatement as described for our proposed state-of-the-art regional distribution center that's pending approval of a construction budget. It would be a state-of-the-art facility that would be expected to employ up to sixty-five people, and it would be taking product from our Phase One manufacturing operation that's under construction currently and mixing it with product from other Kimberly-Clark locations for distribution across the region. We expect that you've got the square footage information. We expect that the project construction, if approved, would begin early next year and be completed by the end of two thousand twenty-seven. And we appreciate your consideration of this. You know, the property tax abatement tax savings certainly would help the operational profile of the facility and support the project for decision.
Thank you, Branch. And if I may comment, I'm sure the Commissioners want to comment, but your footprint in Trumbull County is definitely caused excitement in Trumbull County, the employment opportunities that exist. And know that the Commissioners, we welcome you in, you know, in any way that we can be of service to help amplify even, you know, any additional services, whatever you may offer on that property. We are absolutely interested in Kimberly-Clark positioning themselves here.
Thank you, Commissioner, and certainly that type of support has been evident, you know, from the first time that we interacted with one another, both you all and your staff, and it really sets the tone for investment in the community, so we appreciate your support.
I'll do exactly what you said, and this is something, it is a community project. This is everybody all in on this project, and I think Kimberly-Clark has seen that. And that's why we're already at Phase Two this quickly, I believe, is because of the support we've had in everyone in Warren Township, Howland Township, City of Warren, our economic development team, the unions. This has been a community effort like I've never seen, and hopefully it's a footprint for other businesses to follow here in Trumbull County and to realize we're open for business. We've got plenty of land available. We hope you continue on to Phase Three and Four and beyond, and we're very excited about the future in Trumbull County.
Yeah, Kimberly-Clark can't thank you enough for the partnership, and things are very, the outlook is very bright for the future. Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you also, and what this tells me is that Kimberly-Clark is telling us that they're looking at a long-term investment in Trumbull County, and that's a good thing. That's good for everybody. And this is what happens when townships and cities in the county all work together with a company that wants to come in and provide us with an excellent new manufacturing facility. So from day one, since I've been here, Kimberly-Clark has been open. They've been transparent with us, and they're moving forward. And this facility is a couple of years ahead, so that's a good thing. And you know what? Everybody in Trumbull County and Mahoning Valley welcomes you, and anything we can do for you, you know, we're open for that. So again, thank you, and thank you to your leadership.
And I would be remiss, Commissioners, I think we do have to recognize our planning commission, who, you know, who's been very active here, Lake to River, Jobs Ohio, just the whole Network Board Authority and those that have been active in the process, so we thank them too. We wouldn't be able to do it without them, so want to make sure that they are credited for that. Thank you, Branch.
And again, the line of communication is excellent, so, you know, we thank you for that.
We'll try to keep up with it.
Yep, and safe travels.
Yep. So much.
All right, thank you.
And come back to us again soon.
Can we give a round of applause for Kimberly-Clark, because I think we need to, really. Definitely a nice situation for Trumbull County and Mahoning Valley. Madam Clerk?
Item number ten is to amend Commissioners' regular meeting agenda dated October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Item number ten that read, "To approve the purchase from Pegasus Peter for the purchase of a PepLink Max HD four MBX five G T Priority Certified Mobile Cellular Router for the Trumbull County Emergency Management Agency Mobile Command Post in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifteen cents." Amendment is necessary to include the additional cost of the upgraded routers, antennas, and cables needed for proper installation within the mobile command post. The additional cost of the hardware to include antennas and cables is one thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars, increasing the overall purchase price of the router package to thirteen thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and fifteen cents.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number.
Go ahead.
Item number eleven is to approve or deny the proposed vacation of a portion of Overbrook Avenue, which intersects with Summit Street within the Cedar Park allotment, located in Liberty Township.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number twelve is to grant the petition for annexation of one hundred twenty-two point six hundred thirty-two acres of land owned by Guermar Properties, Inc. as described in Exhibits A one, A two, and A three here, with submitted by the agent for the petitioner on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, for lands in Weathersfield Township and contiguous to the City of Niles, Ohio, based on the submitted certified copy of the pre-annexation agreement entered into between the City of Niles, the Township of Weathersfield, and Guermar Properties, Inc., dated September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, and in accordance with O R C seven zero nine point zero two two for Type One annexations, and authorize the clerk to submit a certified copy of the proceedings herein to the clerk of the City of Niles Council, this fiscal officer of Weathersfield Township, Tom Nader, agent for the petitioners, and the auditor of the Trumbull County, Ohio.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item thirteen is to concur with the county engineer to close the following roadway, North Levitt Road in Warren Township between Caulfield Road and Bosworth Road for sanitary sewer project, closing date Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, through Friday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and the road will be open after working hours and on weekends.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item fourteen is to approve the road repair agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, the Trumbull County Engineer, and Select Water Solutions LLC for the improvements to nine seven eight, nine hundred and seventy-eight feet of McMullen Street in Brookfield Township.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item fifteen is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for statement of qualifications for all projects involving water and sanitary sewer construction and/or treatment for program year two thousand twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item sixteen is to authorize the Board of Commissioners Clerk to advertise for request for statement of qualifications or letter of interest for consultant engineering services for the Still Wagon Road Water Improvements Project, number one dash W dash nineteen, located in Weathersfield and Howland Townships.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item seventeen is to authorize the Board of Commissioners Clerk to advertise for request for statement of qualifications or letter of interest for consultant engineering services for the Williams Drive Water Improvements Project, number four dash W dash twenty-four, located in Bezetta Township.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number eighteen is to authorize the Board of Commissioners Clerk to advertise for request for statement of qualifications or letter of interest for consultant engineering services for the Vienna Package Plant Conversion Project, number six dash S dash twenty-five, located in Vienna Township.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to authorize the Board of Commissioners Clerk to advertise for the request for statement of qualifications or letter of interest for consultant engineering services for the B and K Package Plant Conversion Project, number five dash S dash twenty-five, located in Warren Township.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item twenty is to authorize Richard Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign and accept for use substantial completion the Perkins Jones Road Sanitary and Sewer Improvements Project, number two dash S dash twenty-four, located in Bezetta Township, Trumbull County Combined Sewer District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Michael Bradley for the position of Assistant Wastewater Superintendent with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department, effective December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and that's pay range eleven, fifteen years, thirty-seven, thirty-three per hour.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item twenty-two is to accept the recommendations of Architect Bruce Secanek and M C M Consultant Jason Roblin and to enter into negotiations for space with the Trumbull County Health Board just upon completion of the property reviews that were submitted during the R F P phase of the Trumbull County nine-one-one dispatch relocation project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is to approve the purchase of one two thousand twenty-four Ford Explorer Police Interceptor with, from statewide Ford, in the amount of forty-six thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars. Installation of the police outfit equipment will be an additional five thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars for a total of fifty-one thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item twenty-four is to remove from table agenda item, items number eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, dated November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, that read, "Item eighteen, to formally approve the submitted COBRA rates effective January first, two thousand twenty-six, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six." Item nineteen, to formally approve the submitted chargeback rates to be assessed to departments participating in the health insurance plans offered by the Commissioners, commencing January first, two thousand twenty-six, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. And item twenty, to formally adopt the submitted increase in employee healthcare premium shares for two thousand twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
I'll go ahead and read those. Item twenty-five is to formally approve the submitted COBRA rates effective January first, two thousand twenty-six, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item twenty-six is to formally approve the submitted chargeback rates to be assessed to departments participating in the health insurance plans offered by the Commissioners, commencing January first, two thousand twenty-six, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes, with discussion. This is one of the toughest things. I brought it up at the workshop yesterday. Insurance rates are outside of our control here in the county, and insurance rates have gone up everywhere. I'm going to thank our H R department for doing their due diligence and searching to get the best rate that we possibly could get on all of the health stuff we're talking about here. The COBRA, the health thing, the next agenda item, it's not an easy process. None of us want to raise anything when it comes to employees, but the one thing we don't want to sacrifice is the quality of coverage that Trumbull County employees have. Employees that work here know they have great coverage, they have low deductibles, they have vision, they have hearing, they have dental. They have one of the best health coverage plans that I've seen in any employment agency that I've ever worked in and other ones that we've researched through this whole process. So there are cheaper ways, and we're looking at different ways in the future of maybe adjusting some deductibles, maybe adjusting thresholds, maybe opting out of it if your spouse has insurance and getting a stipend or something for the future. But for right now, this is the best, I believe, that we could have done, although it's, it absolutely pains me to vote yes to raise any amount. We're still at the same percentages that we pay, but the cost of health insurance went up as it did nationwide. Cost of drugs and everything, we all watch the news and see what's going on. But I think we really did a good job collectively, and our H R department did a good job of finding the best of the bad situation of raising prices. And I just wanted employees to know, we're proud to give you good coverage, and we hope that you never have to use it, but it's there for you.
Mr. Hernandez, I need to get your vote.
Yes, yes.
Item twenty-seven is to formally adopt the submitted increase in employment healthcare premium shares for two thousand twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, with discussion, I too would like to thank our H R department, you know, for putting this together. It is not an easy task to have to deal with health insurance and, you know, what we have here. I would like to, you know, mimic what Commissioner had said, that, you know, nobody wants to raise anybody's health insurance, however, due to the industry standard, I think that, given all, you know, given all that, you know, that we can offer, that this is quite the best type of hospitalization that we can offer our employees. So moving forward, I'm sure that we will work with H R, and if we can do any better, we will do better. But at this time, again, I'd like to thank the H R department for doing this.
And that is something, too. We are upholding commitments we have to our unions also. When they negotiate their contracts, negotiate their health coverage, negotiate the amounts they pay, we want to stick with that, and we don't want to ever back out or renegotiate that in any way. And by doing what we did here, it keeps all the contracts intact and provides the best service we can.
Continue. Yes. Item twenty-eight is to designate Zachary Steiner, Planning Coordinator, Trumbull County Planning Commission, as the designated alternate representative for Commissioner Anthony Bernard, member of the Trumbull County Land Reutilization Corporation, effective immediately in accordance with O R C.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item twenty-nine is to appoint/reappoint the following as members of the Trumbull County Senior Services Advisory Council for three-year terms, beginning January first, two thousand twenty-six, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. And that'll be Sam Lehman-Cusa and Anthony La Presina.
I think a motion will approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item thirty is to approve a one-year extension to the agreement with Keefe Commissary Network LLC, effective September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The extension agreement is made between Keefe Commissary Network LLC and the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners for the benefit of the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office. The parties entered into the original commissary agreement dated October twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, where Keefe provides commissary services for the client. The party's desire to extend the agreement for commissary services until September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item twenty-nine is to approve additional budgetary funds be allocated in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars to the budget of the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office, as discussed during to the budget of the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office, as discussed during the Commissioners' Workshop Meeting of November 18, 2025.
Motion to approve?
Second motion?
And discussion on this also, if we could. I want to commend Sheriff Wilson for coming in and basically giving $200,000 back or leaving $200,000 on the table to be utilized by other departments. We had a commitment with him at the beginning of the year out of a reserve fund for an additional $1 million on top of his budget should he need it, and he utilized the first part. We came down to the second $500,000, and he came in our workshop yesterday and said he only needs $300,000. So that's good budgeting, that is controlling overtime, that was a lot of moves that he made in his department, and it was kind of a shocker to come in and say, keep some of the money. I thought he was going to ask for more, which has traditionally been what's happened the last couple of years. And by him not doing that, it's a testament that he is working as a team player with all the elected officials in the county so we can provide the best service at the lowest rate, and waste has been cut out of a lot of our spending we have here in the county. So thank you, Sheriff Wilson, and your whole staff for that.
I have a comment also. Not only did he ask for less money, he's operated his entire budget on a lot less than the previous administration, but he's brought in a lot of additional dollars to the county through funds and through making sure that when he provides resource officers, that everybody's paying the entire amount that was costing the county for resource officers. So he's put a lot of cost-saving measures into his department, and again, as the Commissioner and as the whole board, we all appreciate that. And I think that's what the residents want to see. They want to see us doing everything we can to cut costs and to bring additional revenues in, and he's done that. So, you know, the sheriff and his entire staff should be commended for that.
Fiscal responsibility, and he's leading by example.
It starts at the top and goes all the way to the bottom.
I'll take the vote. Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, and I do have a comment. Commissioners? I do want to commend Sheriff Wilson on his efforts and the staff who have definitely come in under budget, like the Commissioners have said. We did set aside a million dollars. He's not going to tap into all that money. It leaves a reserve for other departments. In addition to that, he has added to the general in an amount of $250,000 in our savings, you know. So not only does he provide the protection on a daily basis, but to come in as far under budget as they did, we would be remiss again not to commend the Sheriff's Department for their due diligence and what they do on a daily basis. And in addition to that, all the overtime hours that have been cut, the list goes on and on. They're doing a great job, fantastic job in that department. So again, I'd like to thank Sheriff and the staff there at the Trumbull County T S O Sheriff's Department. Yes.
Yeah, and I believe that he's a million or two million less than what the previous administration used. So, I mean, he's done a fantastic job down there and has not cut law enforcement or safety anywhere.
Okay, item 32 is to approve state/county opioid funds be utilized for the purchase of one currency counter/scanner from Cummins Allison in the amount of $5,431, and a dedicated computer to run the software for the currency counter/scanner, to be purchased from Southern Computer Warehouse in the amount of $725.49 for use by the Sheriff's Office Tag Unit. In addition, a one-year preventative maintenance inspection agreement will be purchased in the amount of $653 for a total purchase amount of $6,809.49, and to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute said agreement. The purchase of the equipment falls under the opioid abatement strategy category 3, recovery 3B, criminal justice system 49.
Motion to approve?
Second motion?
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes our regular agenda items for this meeting. We're going to move to public comment now, and if you would please approach the podium, give us your name, and you do have three minutes, unless the Commissioners vote otherwise to give you an extended time.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Brian Flanagan, Local 2493 President. Just have a quick statement to make. I'm coming to you because I want to bring some clarification to some allegations that were made about the Maintenance Department. They were regarding overtime fraud and also stealing time. So in my possession, I have a public records request from the State of Ohio Auditor. I do have a statement that I would like to make, but I would also like to make that in private to each and every one of you. So, but I want to give you a copy of this, if that's okay.
Thank you.
So if I could schedule, you know, a moment of your time at some point, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions? I'm not exactly sure. H R, do we have anything on this? I'm not sure that, no comment? Okay. Okay, Mr. Flanagan, I suppose there's no questions, but we'll take this in advisory here, and yes, we could schedule at your, you know, individually if you would like, whenever, if you'd like to schedule with our clerk, please, and let us know, you know, when you're available.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we're still under public comment? No public comments? Diane? How about husband? Does he have any comments? No. Oh, come on up. Okay.
I guess this, we do have two seats available, it looks like, on Senior Levy Advisory Board, and the posting for that will be on our website soon. We're looking for some good individuals in the community to serve on that board so they could be at full capacity, hopefully by the end of the year. So I think the deadline on that is going to be sometime in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll try to address it before the end of the year. So if you're an individual and you'd like to help out spending the senior levy money, get involved in the programs they have, and advising Diane and her staff on the best spending to provide the best service for seniors, please feel free to apply. Just a simple resume is all you have to submit with a letter of interest via our county Commissioners' website, so we ask that you please do that.
Okay, Commissioner, I do have something else. I wanted to comment, this probably has to do with 911. Tacy's here. I have been getting several calls from area police chiefs, fire chiefs in the Brookfield, Hubbard, those areas that are trying to access the Mark's Tower. So I did call yesterday to First Energy. First Energy said that the tower is powered. Actually, that was a band named Tower of Power. No pun intended. But I did reach out afterwards to Mark's Radio, Mark's Towers, and I spoke with Jim Sullivan, and his comment is, sorry for the delay. Ornet is scheduled to do its testing tomorrow. If everything goes as planned, Motorola will be in to do their testing, and he will let me know as each occurs. Thank you, Jim Sullivan, Mark's Tower. So just to let the chiefs know, because there has been issue with, you know, response to that tower, it's not been working. That should be up and running within the next several days. So I will keep the, I will keep the fire chiefs and the police chief surprised as to how that is going. And I already made a contact to two of them, one in the Hubbard area, Hubbard Township, Hubbard City, and then also the Fire Department and the Trustee Suddles in Brookfield to let them know about this process. So just wanted to let the Commissioners know what, you know, what we've been hearing from the chiefs. Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman, I have one item. Last week, we had a resident that had some concern that if you went to one emergency room facility and they couldn't take care of you, that you were being turned down at another facility. I reached out to Mercy Health, the president, Charlotte Gardner, last week, and we had a conversation, and I just want to let the board know and the residents know that that's totally not true, that they do, if you go to Mercy Health, you will be treated, and they will take all the precautions and care that's needed. So I'm not sure where that's, how that information got out, but that's totally not true.
Yeah, and I would agree, you know, that that, I believe, is against the law.
It's a federal law, not to...
Exactly, not to service just because they were at, you know, another facility. So, and while we're on the discussion of hospitals, I have been, again, you know, in contact with Insight, and they just released another statement to me. I know that there's some disparity with the union commissioners. We are not in, you know, in a capacity to negotiate for the union or Insight, but I believe that, you know, with, you know, with the hospital staffing, their H R, or however they're working with the unions, there seems to be some sort of an issue with communication. So I did speak with Tom Connolly from one of the nurses' unions, and I'm looking to try to schedule maybe a meeting between Insight, their H R, and their department that would be in negotiation. Not, if I have to attend, I will attend, but, you know, we need more hospitals in the area. We're just hoping that Insight can maintain their services on an emergency level and elevate that down the road to what they had said, full staff. So hopefully, they can make that happen, but I just want to let you know where that was at. Okay, anything, Commissioner?
Yes, good, bad, indifferent. First, for employees in the building here or across the street, from 11:30 to 2:30 today, they do have a Friendsgiving event down in the lunchroom that all employees are invited to stop by. I was texting that over from the woman that coordinated that, so we wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving with our employees. Secondly, I'd like to express our thoughts and prayers to Jason Cook from Healthy Hearts and Paws, who's obtained a vicious, vicious dog bite, doing his volunteer job with Healthy Hearts and Paws, picking up a dog, and he took a bite to the neck and face that is going to require surgeries, and he, it sounds like he's doing okay, but it could have been an absolutely tragic event. And, you know, these people that volunteer to handle the dogs, whether they're in our Dog Wardens Department or the volunteer agencies out there, you know, these dogs and cats don't realize all the time that it's a friendly hand that's coming to help them out, and, you know, we've all had that situation where there's a mean dog in the neighborhood and someone's got to go get it, and fortunately, there's people like Jason out there willing to do it, but he paid the price on this one, and we wish him a speedy recovery, and just let him know our thoughts and prayers are with him, and we're thankful for the service that he and all the people that serve like him provide. And then, on a final note, I am hosting an event on Sunday. It's nonpolitical, so I can announce it here. It's just something that I'm hosting at Packard Music Hall for charity. I've gave, we have an Elvis tribute artist. It's a matinee at Packard Music Hall where I rented it personally and hired the band, and we gave tickets away to a bunch of charities. We've raised over $10,000 for local charities from the ticket sales that they've sold, and it's open to the public, and tickets are as low as 10 bucks, and it's a matinee from 3:00 to about 6:00 with Three Chord Money, and then Danny Gobinski, the Mecca Township trustee, and his Elvis tribute band, but it's got the full light show, the full band. If you're a fan of the Elvis Christmas music, I invite you to come and join our community as we raise money for charity on that day.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner? We need a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. See you next week.